I'd like to call the meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors of January 28, 2016 to order. Would you all rise for the flag salute? And I'm gonna have Director Cobb start it tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Counsel would call the roll, please.
Director Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here. The Chair would move to excuse Director Heinz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All's in favor of excusing Director Heinz, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Director Heinz is excused. Adoption of the --
Student Representative Olson.
Here.
Oh, sorry.
Student Representative Bernardic. Here.
You guys weren't -- oh, here. You've been busy, I know. Alright, now, motion to adopt the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Then moved in second. Are there any questions or comments on the agenda? Hearing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Hearing no opposition, motion is adopted. Agenda is adopted. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Item five-one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award. And I will let our Director of Partnerships, Amanda Scott-Thomas, to please tell us who we're gonna honor tonight.
Thank you, Director Viall. Thank you, Board of --
Superintendent Santorno has a comment.
I just wanted to mention before Amanda does a recognition that we have a recognition for Amanda. Additionally, she's been selected as a 2016 Woman of Distinction by the Girl Scouts.
It was an honor and surprise, so thank you very much. So, we are here tonight, the Community Partnership Office, to do a recognition for a community partner, Gold Star Award. We started this about a year ago, and we have tonight an honorary, the second individual that we've honored. We usually honor big organizations, but when there's an individual in our community that is going way above and beyond, we wanna recognize those individuals. So Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, school districts, schools, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. The partners work with and invest in education of our children and our youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in our whole Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools realizes that we cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. On this evening, we're going to celebrate, under your consideration, Alicia Wood. She's been volunteering once a week on her lunch hour to support a group of fifth-grade girls at Stanley Elementary School. Ms. Wood has created a student-centered, high-standard, and most important caring and supportive book club for young ladies. The participants are motivated to go to the reading book club because Ms. Wood is prepared, organized, and caring. Her book study questions involve the girls in high-level discourse, and Principal Cynthia Johnson is so excited about this as an expanded learning opportunity, she says that the most significant thing about Ms. Woods is her, as a volunteer, is her ability to see the whole child, not just the academics. When one of the book club members had a difficult time reading the novel chosen for the girls' club, the student was upset because the book was difficult to read, and that's when the tutoring began. Ms. Wood took it upon herself to volunteer another day just to spend one-on-one time helping her read the book. In addition, Ms. Wood also was helping her with math and writing, too. Ms. Stanley's fifth-grade teachers, Ms. Pearson, is thrilled to have her working with her student. Ms. Wood is also an example of great team members that we have at Tacoma Public Schools. She's not only a volunteer, she's an employee of Tacoma Public Schools, and she works as a secretary for our TPS's Title I office. And so we wanna honor her for taking her time, not only just daily working with TPS as an employee, but as a volunteer in our building. So I'm gonna have Alicia Wood and Principal Cynthia Johnson to come up to the front. Come on, you guys.
Hello. I have kindergarten registration, so it'll be brief. Get over here. See, it's not about the book. It's about the relationship. And the beauty of it is, I have lost an office. She has found my office, right? So she has taken over my office on Thursdays for over an hour because my book club is there. I gave her the library, and she said she needed it more intimate. But let me tell you, I was walking through the building, of course she had my office, and I didn't hear reading. I heard unbelievable poetry and chanting. She had my girls rockin' and rollin'. And because of her, I got a book, and we're all going to go -- what's the name of the book?
Percy Jackson.
Oh, it's something. But anyway, it's fabulous. And we are taking our girls and some other students on a Sunday down to see the play.
Fantastic.
Percy Jackson. It's something, okay? And then, now, I said, you know what? Let's take the girls to stadium. So I'm arranging with Kevin to take a bunch of our girls in fifth grade. You know we say, "Let's go to college"? Many of my students haven't even seen a high school. So because of her, she's inspired me. Give her a hand.
Okay, I'm just gonna say something. They asked me to say something really quick. So, I grew up in Tacoma Public Schools, grew up in Hilltop. Anyways, we are reading a book called Follow Your Dreams. And I had each one of the girls make a poster of what their dream looked like, and so whatever that may be. And so after, you know, they present it to us and we look at it, the girls turn to me and they say, "Well, Mrs. Wood, what is your dream?". And I said, "Well, actually..." I mean, I wasn't prepared, but right off the tip of my tongue, I said, "My dream is that each one of you do exactly what I'm doing. I want you to spend one year of your life volunteering, giving back, and it will change you like you could never imagine. Each one of you. And I want that to just keep going and going and going and going." So that is my dream, and that's why I'm a part of this book club. Thank you.
And that's it from Community Partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, Members of the Public -- do we have any? Members of the public wishing to address the Board. School Board members encourage public participation, and your input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, I'd like you to please follow these steps. Number one, you need to complete a citizen request card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Excuse me. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered this session. Superintendent, we'll call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak in the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. At two minutes, you will get notified that you have one minute left, and then at the end of the three minutes, you'll hear a ding, and that will let you know that your time is up. And as always, we hope that comments will be civil and appropriate and respectful. And so with that, Superintendent Santorno, who do we have first?
Yes, we have one speaker that's turning in a card, Sally Perkins, speaking regarding benchmarks.
President Viall, Vice President Ushka, Members of the Board, Superintendent Santorno. I'm testifying this evening to ask that the Board and the district set specific benchmark numerical goals for all student groups for whom you have promised to disaggregate data, and especially for those groups of students impacted by the achievement gap. Strategic Plan Goal One, which is the Academic Excellence Goal, all students will perform at or above grade level, and we will eliminate disparities among all groups of students. The benchmark numerical goals that the Board set in September begin to address all students performing at or above grade level, but don't yet address the elimination of disparities among all groups of students. The benchmarks in general will measure student learning based on two measures, state tests and report card standards. This is part of the district's commitment to using more than one measure to assess student progress. Note that both the state test results and report card standards results show the same 15 to 20 percentage point gap between white students and black and Latino students for third and fifth grade reading and math. Note that the gap is the same whether the state test is the WASSL, the MSP, or the SMAR TERR balanced, and note that the gap is the same 15 to 20 percentage points for the three years of report card standards that the district has provided. In other words, no matter what measure or tool is used, the achievement gap persists. And while there are individual schools that have made significant progress in closing the gap, there is not a visible published system-wide analysis of the gaps, nor is there a visible published system-level plan to solve them. The achievement gap portion of the district's website has not been updated since 2012. The Board declined to set group-specific benchmark numerical goals for the Goal One Report Card Standards in September. I request that the Board reconsider that decision. The language of Goal Number One includes the elimination of disparities among all group as a part of the goal language. How can the district systematically track progress toward that part of Goal One unless you sent benchmark numerical goals to achieve it? A wise woman once said, "What gets measured, gets done." That wise woman is thankfully our superintendent. Clearly, the top-level goal is for all students to be successful in their learning and achievement. Students who are doing well, yes, we want them to do even better. But when some groups of students are systematically scoring 15 to 20 percentage points below other groups on multiple measures and regardless of the measurement tool, it's time to set strong aspirational numerical goals for these students to catch up. It's time to develop and publish a system-level plan for closing the gaps, and it's time to devise and publish system-wide strategies and approaches to make this happen. Thank you very much for your consideration of these ideas.
Thank you. Moving on, item number seven, Superintendent's Report, and I believe we have a report this evening, Superintendent.
We've asked, I've asked Lisa Nolan to give you just a brief update about her progress toward reaching the goal set in the Human Resources review. There will be a time when she'll do an entire study session to talk about you, to you, about all the things she's implemented. But just because she's made such incredible progress, I ask her to highlight some of those, a few of those things. Thank you, Ms. Nolan.
Thank you. President Viall, Vice President Ushka, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Santorno, I am here this evening to share an update on progress towards goals on behalf of Human Resources. And before I do that, I really would like to point out some members in the audience who are part of the leadership team of Human Resources, because without their dedication and strong commitment to the work, we would not be able to be committed to such robust work. So would you guys please give a wave?
Yay, go team!
And secondly, there will be a Friday, a report, and Friday's report tomorrow where you can dig deeper into the data. So tonight's an update, but we'll dig deeper tomorrow as you review that report. So last year, we participated in a review of the HR department, where an outside agency reviewed us and established where our strengths are and what next steps we have to increase success. And what we committed to the school board last May was to establishing metrics and quarterly reports, and tomorrow in the Friday report, you'll actually see a quarterly report with the metrics. We committed to improving the selection and hiring process and committed to improving customer service. And what that meant for us is that we really needed to understand internally what certain things look like, what our internal expectations look like, so that we could deliver a high-quality service to our external stakeholders. So immediately, we engaged in the work of establishing some guiding practices that would provide some norms or consistencies of the way in which we would approach business and how we would approach customer service. We began participating in focused professional development that targeted specifically our interaction within the department as well as outside of the department, and some streamlined and efficient processes that we could focus on. And we also made a commitment to increase communication within the department so that we had an understanding of what it means to all be rowing in the same direction. And then came our external, or our stakeholder engagement. And we committed to establishing an HR advisory committee. That group has met two times this year and consists of people such as our TPA, our Tacoma Principal Association President, our TEA President. We've got teachers and other labor groups represented, and it's a time to come together and have a semi-formal discussion around what are you seeing as strengths? What areas do you think we can improve in? And it's just a time for us to listen and understand how we can learn and grow and be responsive. For each one of our KPIs, our Key Performance Indicators that I'll be discussing this evening, we have a partner that's out in the field, whether it's operations and maintenance, or a teacher, or a principal. We have a partner who we check in with to gauge our work and establish our success. We've implemented customer surveys so that we get ongoing feedback as to how we're doing with our customers, so we know if we're headed in the right direction. We've increased our communications almost by 50% in district-to-school communications as well as the innovator, and we are now providing an increased and more robust opportunity for professional development, particularly for principals and hiring managers as it relates to employee performance, conduct, and support. We also, and I mentioned this in September, have now become a participant of the Council of the Great City Schools. And what that does for us is it provides us with a true metrics in which we can compare ourselves to 3,500 other school districts nationwide, and perhaps most importantly, six school districts within the state of Washington who participate. And I think about the SMAR TERR balanced assessment, or WASSL, MSP, whichever one you would like to insert. When students take a test, it just gives us a measure of how we're doing and identifies areas in which we can grow and improve and focus on. And that's what this participation does for us. It allows us to see areas where we can grow and celebrate our successes. So what you see on this slide is our four KPIs that we focused on, and again, this came out of the findings of the report last year, but are also in alignment with what the Council of Greater City Schools, of the Great City Schools says are key performance indicators for high-functioning HR systems. And I'll go through them individually on the following slides. But before I do that, it's important to point out the rationale, why these particular KPIs or these key performance indicators. Well, first and foremost, as an HR team, we're working really hard to emphasize the fact and be transparent about the fact, about the work that we do in Human Resources impacts the front lines. There's a direct correlation to the success in the classroom based on things that we do within our hiring practices and how we onboard people. So we really focus on academic excellence. We'd like an equitable approach to the work that we do, focus on employee engagement. We'd like to retain our staff and be placed and understand the data so well that when it comes time for hiring, we can really have the first-mover advantage over neighboring school districts. So our first KPI, I'd just like to give you a brief visual over, is our teacher vacancies on the first day of school. And I reported on this in September, but you can see in the 1415 school year, on the first day of school, we had 24.8 teacher vacancies. This year, we started with 14 on the first day of school, and our goal is to have 12 to decrease by two for next year. Now, keep in mind, we do have some boundary revisions that are coming up that will impact staffing and different things that may not be within our internal locus of control, but nonetheless, we feel that the goal of 12 is an important goal, and we will work hard to attain that. One of our other KPIs is the time to hire. It is important to us that we have a hiring process that is efficient and lean and gets the people hired and in their positions in as quickly of a time as possible. And you can see the stages right here, and the number of target days that you see down below are actual goals. We would like to decrease from the 36-day current hiring process, and actually, we've already decreased it by a couple of days since October, to 28 days. And keep in mind that we are one, that we are a school district who does require the fingerprinting to be complete and cleared before we put students, before we put staff members in the classroom unless there's an MOU that indicates otherwise. But typically speaking, we go through that fingerprinting process, so some things just will naturally take a little bit longer. But the stages that are within our locus of control, we are focusing on and making some strides to improve on that. Now, this slide right here brings up a cohort, you'll see the 2012-13 to 2013-14. And what you see on the left is the first-year teachers, Tacoma Public Schools compared to the national median. How do we look? Do we retain our teachers after the first year? And as you can see in this visual, we actually lose more than what the national median says after the first year. And so things like the BEST Grant that we were recently awarded, and the Teaching and Learning Team has really taken on wholeheartedly to support our new teachers with the support of Human Resources, is critical to retainment. So having this data in front of us really understands how we can be, how we can improve our service delivery model around our new teachers. And then you can see for the second year, we're actually above the national median. So if we can close that gap in the first year, then chances are the second year will look even better than it does now. But what you'll find in the Friday report is some five-year trend data, so you'll have an even deeper understanding. Now, this KPI is interesting because with the elimination of No Child Left Behind and ESSA, the early, the Every Student Succeeds Act coming on board, we don't, we will not need to focus on highly qualified like we have in the past. But what this slide does for us is it tells us that we are actually doing a pretty decent job at having highly qualified teachers in the classroom. And it's imperative that I draw your attention to the visual on the right, because what you see there are our Title I schools, where we have students who demonstrate the highest level of need. We have only 1% of our staff who are not deemed highly qualified under No Child Left Behind.
I wanna jump in. Can you explain what highly qualified means?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Highly qualified means, for example, if you, if there's a math opening at a school, a middle school, highly qualified means that you either have the appropriate endorsement or you're highly qualified as evidenced by a state test or other practitioners. So that's what it means. You're deemed --
Thank you. I think people just may get a different idea.
Thank you. Yeah. Very good. But our recruiting efforts will be able to look a little bit different with the elimination of this, and we'll just stay tuned on the implications for our school district. And finally, before I close, I would, I would like to say that customer service is absolutely critical, and we call this employee engagement. We believe that when internally customers are happy, our employees are engaged. And so in October, we began to utilize a customer service survey. And realistically, it goes out to random people to share with us what their experience was like in Human Resources. It could be via, because somebody came in in person, a phone call, or an email exchange, but we randomly send out our survey. And basically, we want to know if our, if our stakeholders are satisfied. And this is, this is a visual that shows that each one of the responses that have come in to date have at least been a minimum of good all the way to excellent. We haven't had any poor ratings, but our commitment is to move from good to very good and from very good to excellent, and we will be in the relentless pursuit of improvement in this area. Finally, in closing, you know, Human Resources, there's one key word that we focus on, and that word is human. We are in this business to be, to be a support to people and to extend outstanding customer service, whether it's to somebody who is currently employed, somebody who's seeking employment, or a community member. And it is an honor and a privilege to work with such a great team who is committed to moving forward in the name of impacting student achievement within the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Questions or comments of the Board? Director Winskill.
So when you look at the number, the attrition in the first year, do you do exit interviews with those teachers at all?
Very good question. We have done exit interviews in the past, and I was just going to try to get to that slide so that people could have a visual as we speak. We do exit interviews, and it's not a requirement, so we haven't had a high level of participation now as far as a full disclosure of why people are exiting. But this is pure data, which also means that although the numbers are small, some, some of these numbers do represent a non-renewal.
Okay. Well, I just, I know people in the past who have taught and realize it's not for them. So, you know, it's nothing that we could do, and actually, it's good that people identify that, you know.
Absolutely.
You know, so I don't know that it's such a bad thing necessarily if people, early on, say, "I can't handle this," basically, because it's hard work.
Yes, and, and we agree, and that's why one of our goals is to really get after that exit survey and be able to categorize why people are leaving so that we can come alongside and be supportive where necessary.
Yeah, so that second year looks really good. I think we should really concentrate on that one. Thank you for the good report.
Director Cobb.
I have two comments. First one is about the number of vacancies at the start of the school year. I think that's a great trend to see going down, because there's so much work that teachers do in the first few weeks of school to establish kind of classroom norms, to set expectations for culture and behavior. So I just think that's great to see that number coming down. And with regard to the slides about the highly qualified teachers, I just, just having worked out at OSPI, I know that some of the compliance related to that is onerous and, and isn't necessarily tied to the effectiveness of the teacher. But as the Every Student Succeeds Act rolls out and some of the compliance requirements of the former act go away and some new requirements come, I just hope that we still keep an eye towards, I'm having, some way of measuring how, who's in front of the classroom, and are they the most appropriate teacher to be there? And keep an eye on things like the split between the Title I and non-Title I. So I just look forward to us, HCH, to think about how we keep an eye on that even in the new regulatory landscape.
Absolutely, and I see that Dr. Garcia is moving towards the microphone, because we recently had a conversation about this.
You bet. And -- I have to recognize you first. I apologize. Dr. Garcia. Deputy Superintendent.
Director Cobb, you're spot on. One of the things that we'll be looking for leadership in is, at the state level, they're gonna have to define what, the difference between highly qualified and language around highly effective. And so there'll still be parameters, and so we feel like the trend of looking at that as a KPI, although the definition may change, is still really critical, just for the reasons you said, making sure that our most vulnerable learners have highly effective teachers and that we are able to measure that growth amongst those students. And so we'll be working closely with state officials to hopefully drive some of that definition, and in not only that area, but the rest of the, the act itself.
Well, I think we all know that you can have someone on paper who has all the endorsements and all the tests, but you put them in front of a classroom, and if they don't have the ability to teach, they're not gonna be highly effective. And I totally agree, and hopefully, we do have a chance to drive that some, in terms of helping write those. And maybe we should make it clear, we'd like to be involved in that, and we're putting together some of the metrics now to start measuring that and get out in front. And believe me, they listen to us in Olympia, so I think we might wanna make some contact down there about offering to help write those regulations. Director Ushka.
Thank you. I think I would not second that, but third that at this point. And I also wanna actually just say thank you. When I first came to this Board, the challenges with HR were pretty enormous, and the transformations that we've seen in the past six years and since you've been on board have been fantastic. I really appreciate that. One of the things that we used to get is a report every year that told us what teachers were endorsed in and what they were working as, and the disparities were far and wide. So we don't wanna go back whatsoever. I wanna go back to your survey for a minute. You said that you sent it out randomly, but it sounds like you're hand sending it out, which is typically not random, that's subjectively based, so how are you randomizing it?
It's random in the sense that it goes to every ninth connection, whether it's a visitor, the ninth visitor, and, and whether it's an email, a particular ninth email, or a ninth phone call, and so that's a random component, although somewhat controlled. And then within the particular department of Human Resources, there's some uncertainty will bounce between the departments.
Great, I am glad to hear that. Going back to the targets on the date to hire, I like that you have --
a ninth phone call. And so, that's a random component, although somewhat controlled. And then, within the particular department of Human Resources, there's some uncertainty will bounce between the departments.
Great, I am glad to hear that. Going back to the targets on the date to hire, I like that you have targets on that. It's definitely been an issue, you know, that we've talked about over the years. But I don't see any data associated with that. Will that be in the Friday report?
Yes, it will be. And so, you'll, you'll gain an understanding of, of why we've set this goal. You'll see within that report also our SMART goals that we've established this. So, you'll see our baseline, where we're started, where we've started, and where we want to go. This just ultimately captures where, where we want to go, which is a 28-day. That's our goal now. And once, once we've reached a high level of proficiency around this, perhaps that number will even decrease and will change our goal. But this is a 20, it's roughly a 20% decrease goal currently to decrease it to the 28 days. So, it's, it's pragmatic, but we feel like we can attain that.
Yeah, I've actually had the opportunity to help process some current processing for HR hiring in educational settings, and it's frequently abundantly complex. So, when I only saw seven boxes there, I was kind of clapping already. So, great. I look forward to seeing the outcome.
Thank you.
You know, I think all of us that have been on this board for any length of time, I know when, and Director Heinz, I know would second my comments, we came on the board, HR was the issue. And that was in 2011, December. And now, every time I'm out in the building, I hear how great HR is, and about now, things are getting done for principals and teachers and so on. And I just want to say that customer service is awesome. And I also want to know if the board's going to get invited to the big teaching fair, teaching hire fair this year again? That was fun. Director Miller and I did that last year.
That was a lot of fun, and absolutely, and wear those blue shirts.
Oh, I still have them. I have it ready to go.
Good deal. We'll get Director Cobb one because she won't.
Yeah, she can come too, and-
Do you have a date for that yet?
Yeah, I was going to ask that. Thank you.
March 15th, but stay tuned. Nope.
We'll get you the date.
Just to the date, stay tuned.
I just had one comment about the reduction in the vacancies on, on first day of school. I think you were there when I filled in and started first grade at Sheridan.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, we remember that and how hard that is. But when you look at that number, 14, that's 14 out of over 2,000 teachers that are in their classrooms. So, that statistically is a very small number in comparison to other school districts. And we're going to get better, I know that. But there are always unforeseen things that, that do happen, but I'm, I'm really pleased to see that drop. And I know that, I've heard that from principals too. They're just saying, you know, we're not figuring, figuring out who are we going to get, or who can we scramble to get, and if someone can stay or not stay. And Director Cobb's, I think, or Director Winskell's comments about having certainty when you start that first day of school. So, overall, I think, you know, the good news just keeps on coming, and thank you for all your hard work, and I know that it has not been easy, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, approval for consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. Could all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed. Consent agenda is adopted. Off the track here. Here we go. Policy matters. Item nine, Policy 2015 School Innovation. This is second reading. Ms. Medina.
The Chief Financial, wrong one, sorry. The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Revised Policy 2015 School Innovation.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Just for the sake of the public, what this policy does is align our financial policies to our innovation policies so that the two are in sync. Is that a correct summary?
It aligns our practice-
Yeah.
-around the innovation for the financial piece, yes.
Okay, so, all those in, is there any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Quarterly financial report update, of which we have none tonight.
Correct.
But presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis, and our monthly financial statements can be found on the district website. Curriculum, moving on, item number 11, curriculum and instruction. Nothing. Item 12, Business Matters, 12-1 Adoption of Resolution Number 2005, Whittier-Wainwright Boundary Revisions. Chief Financial Officer, I think.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2005, directing the adjustment of district attendance areas in anticipation of the opening of the Wainwright-Whittier Intermediate School.
I move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, to adopt Resolution Number 2005. Are there discussion? Debbie?
I just think we need to thank everybody on that committee and certainly-
Like, palpitating.
Leading, you know, it was just a piece of cake, and it was great that everybody agreed at the end. And I like the idea that it's relieving overpopulation at Edison and Manitow and, you know, just kind of stretched, yeah, stretched farther.
So, just echo the same, I mean, it was, I went to one of the meetings and it was, normally, these things are, are not without a lot of controversy, and somehow, we managed to get through that this time, and hopefully, we'll do that when we start to look at the middle school boundaries. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted. 12-2 Approval of Sustainable School Source for Furniture Layout and Design of the Human Resources Remodel. Chief Operating, Steve, you were, you're on.
That's me.
Okay, Chief Operating, I'm sorry.
If so moved and seconded, I'd be happy to clarify the scope and objectives-
All right, I'm sorry. Do I have a, can I have a motion to approve, please?
No, let me, I'll, I'll-
Did we get a motion?
I'll read the-
Mr. Murakami needs to read the item first.
Okay, go ahead.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the selection of Sustainable School Source and authorize staff to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Sustainable School Source not to exceed $500,000 for the remodel of the Human Resources Office.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of Sustainable School Source for Furniture Layout. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Other business, seeing none. 14, Report to the Board. Item 14-1, Report Construction Update. Mr. Murakami, if you would, please.
Thank you, President Vial, and members of the board, student representatives, Superintendent Santorino, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I'm welcoming our Director of Planning and Construction to assist in the presentation. This is going to be primarily a construction update to show you what's going on, the steel in the air, the, the bricks being erected, and to get you guys excited about the new things coming. We'll also touch briefly on the projects in design. We'd like to start off first with a reminder of the vision that we started with. And Rob, if you would, could you pass me the slide tool there? See if this works. Hold on for just a moment. Okay. So, several years ago, we went through a district-wide process with representatives from all levels of the district, from students to staff to principals, level directors, and a lot of the administrative team, to talk about how it is we want to build our new facilities. And we talked about guiding principals that would guide us through the design. We talked about the relationships that the built environment would instill, and we talked about the methodologies of how we want our students to learn and how we want our teachers to teach. And the biggest piece that came out of this was a philosophy that we'd stop talking about the classroom and what the adult needs, but what are the activities that the students are going to be engaging in for a real, authentic educational environment? And so, this went through a process of creating the types of activities we want to see, and then trying to challenge our architectural design teams to wrap those with spaces. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Rob to take us through the next few slides.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us to update you. It's always exciting. Thank you also for the opportunity to be at the all-cab staff meeting last week. That was really fun, and we got people up and moving, which is always an excellent thing. Before we get into McCarver, I want to just remind you about a couple of things. First of all, in the foyer, or just in the back here, we've got the finishes for Arlington Elementary School, which is in design right now. So, take a look at that on your way out if you have a chance, and we can be around to talk about what's going on there. Also, it's going out to bid probably in late March, and opening bids in late April. So, that's moving right along. Wanted to let you know, we're going to circle back to SAMMY, the Environmental Education Center at Point Defiance, but it's also going to be going out to bid in late March or early April, in the spring. Mary Lion is also currently in programming right now, conceptual design. So, our design advisory committees, both on Mary Lion and Brown's Point, are meeting regularly, and excellent processes. We're getting input from students and staff and the community, so we're, we're excited about where those conceptual discussions are going. Also, coming up in the spring, we're going to be starting to look for design services for Grant and Bernie. So, we are moving at light speed, and lots of exciting things happening, and so, we appreciate the opportunity to, to share with you. Starting with McCarver, and this is going to be a quick fly-through, so if we go too quickly, apologize, but a lot of projects and little time to talk about them right now. Right now, at McCarver, in this picture, you can see McCarver Square as it will look, somewhat unfinished right now, but, but coming along. Plaster ceiling restoration is in progress right now. Our windows are in and complete. And in the next slide, you'll see, oops, no, I have this one right here. I wanted to show you, the black windows on the bottom are the ones that are complete, and you can see the old windows at the top that are white. So, now, all of those windows are in, so that's new. We're also setting mechanical units on the roof. We've had our maintenance and operations folk walk through and look behind the walls to make sure they know what's going on there. We are on budget since the gross maximum price was approved, and so, that's good news. We're scheduled for substantial completion in August, and the site work is still going Moving right along to Stewart. The first one of Stewart that you're going to see here is, oh, I've got to go one back there. There we go. This is an overall view of the progress of the new gymnasium and the locker rooms. So, this Stewart is well on its way. Site work is still going on. The synthetic turf field, we're waiting on quotes right now to come back for that field turf, but that site work will begin here in the spring. Shear walls will be complete in the next week or two, and the gymnasium roof trusses should be installed next week. Also on budget since the gross maximum price was accepted, and also scheduled for substantial completion in November of this year, opening in the fall of '17. Couple more quick pictures here.
So, for those that are home, both McCarver and Stewart are on time and on budget.
Yes.
And they're historic renovations, and that's significant.
Yeah, we're very pleased with the contractor's work and progress and what they've done for us. Moving on to Wilson. Wilson is moving along very quickly. We're pleased with this. The concrete slab is complete. This is an overall view of the new academic building that's going up. Steel erection continues at the academic building. Preparation and planning for the spring transition at the gym building is in progress with the staff. We've added the music building scope of work by change order, and that is scheduled for substantial completion in the spring of '17. We've also added athletic scope of work to the project, and we hope to begin that here in the spring. And so, that would be scheduled for substantial completion in the summer, spring or summer of 2017. One thing I wanted to say about the city of Tacoma is they could have requested us to do a modification to our building permit because of the added athletics package, but they haven't. Again, they've been a great partner for us, and we appreciate the way they have worked with us ongoing. And then, that is also, let's see, I'm losing myself in my notes. We're scheduled for substantial completion of the academic building here in August. So, lots going on moving into the next school year on all of our projects. Moving on to-
You might show this. In this, in this slide, the picture on your left was a week ago, the concrete slab for the new academic building. That picture on the right was taken the other day. So, in a week, they've gotten the steel for the first floor and second floor and roof framing erected. So, they are flying.
They're doing a great job.
And that is after construction.
It is. After construction.
So, on to Wainwright. Wainwright, here you, our picture, this picture shows an overall view of the construction facing west, and they are moving along very quickly on this project as well. Masonry installation is complete for the building framework. Our concrete slabs are being poured for each floor. The sprinkler pipes are currently being installed. Metal roof decking is being installed. The raised slab on metal deck concrete continues, and the site utility work continues as the weather permits. Steel erection at the next area building will begin in about two weeks, according to the contractor, and our mechanical and electrical roughing continues at the first level of Building A. And we have been on budget since bid day. Scheduled for substantial completion this August of '16 as well. So, a couple of pictures here. On the left side, you see the welding and setting the structural steel framing on the south side of Building A, and on the right photo, you'll see the welding and setting of the structural steel framing on the north side of Building A. And in the left photo here, you're seeing the setting of the metal roof decking on the east side of Building A. And in the right photo, this is a site retaining wall being constructed for the pedestrian path on the southeast end of the site. So, one of the things I wanted to say about the site as well is there was an unprecedented amount of soil remediation work that we did, which involves churning the soil, looking for hot spots where there's arsenic, and doing everything we can to make the site safe for anyone who's coming on, on the site. So much so that we went well above what is required by the Department of Ecology, and that is catching the eye of the Department of Ecology. So, this is a great thing for Tacoma as well.
You'll notice in that picture on the right that there are a few tracks through the woods, but much of the work was done in and around the trees as we're trying to save as many trees as possible, and at the same time, create an outdoor learning opportunity so that that, that isn't a negative part of the site that, that we're trying to keep kids out of, but we're allowing them to get into that forest at the base, at the mid-level, and up in the canopy through our three-story classroom wing. So, that kind of work is, is driving that soil remediation project, and it's a lot of work by hand. And I think that's the part that the DOE really took notice of, is that to the level of extent that we're going into that tree area, instead of just leaving it and walking away, we're making it a clean, healthy, safe environment for outdoor learning.
And kind of going back to one of the original things Steve said, you know, across our projects, you will see areas in the school for core learning. You're going to see, and I'm talking about all of our projects, core learning, collaboration areas, multi-use spaces. We're looking for ways constantly to connect kids to the outdoor classroom, to nature. And so, at Wainwright, there's a wonderful tree walk that comes out from every level that kids will be able to go up and be in the tree canopy from a standing position. So, that's an exciting part to it. Brings us to SAMMY, the Environmental Learning Center. At SAMMY, this is a rendering. So, this particular view is looking across the bridge at the north end. Is it called Animal Row?
Animal Road, yeah.
Animal Road. And it's right in the zoo. It makes part of the perimeter of the zoo. So, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the school board is going to have its annual joint board meeting with Metro Parks in early February. And so, the next few slides are a preview of what you guys are going to see then. So, we're excited to bring both groups together because this is an unprecedented level of community partnerships, working to leverage community assets for the good of all. And I have, I've been doing architecture and, and school design and construction for 20 years now, and I've never seen this level, it's unprecedented, of, of groups coming together for the betterment of the community. And so, we're excited for you guys not only to see this project, but the environmental or the Eastside Community Center, which we have some images of as well. So, let's click through a couple.
So, we want to say a special thanks to Director Vial and Director Ushka for their leadership in the process with our joint board meetings. We appreciate your involvement and, and look forward to that continuing as we move through the project.
Yes, and we're looking forward to doing that on the next phase of the Eastside Community Center as well. Having, having liaisons from both sides active in the meetings. Director Vial, you, you know what the, I think you called it chicken coops of the first conceptual design came out as.
I think I called it chicken coops on the hill, and then you called it and said they redid it, no more chicken coops on the hill.
I was trying to block that out, but it's coming back. But I think when you stand back and what you guys challenged us to do- But I think when you stand back, and what you guys challenged us to do is evident in the new design, from the aesthetics from the exterior to the innovation inside. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project, and it's, we're making the best of it.
Just a couple of other points on SAMMY, the Environmental Learning Center. The final coordination is in process. We are in for permitting and our conditional use permit. As I said, we'll be bidding here in the early spring. We're working on the final ground lease, which is related to the Eastside Community Center, and also the operationally, so how will we maintain these buildings, and how will that work with the zoo staff? There's a joint board meeting scheduled for February 10th, and that was my last point.
Let's go to this one. This one is exciting, yeah. So you guys have all seen the portables in the park. I don't know if you've seen the portables recently, but each one has been wrapped in a vinyl graphic. And if you guys remember, the floppy disks of old, it would take a thousand-plus disks to carry the image for one single portable, as they were printed like 35 feet long and 12 feet tall. Massive files, but when you go up there, you see kids in the woods, you see students learning in a completely engaged way. And so now that's this beautiful backdrop as you come up to what was a portable world. On the other side, it opens up into the forest, and there's gang walkways, there's places for students to congregate, and it's just such a more, the level of appreciation from the students from where they were, even though they're still in the same portables, it's a world of difference, and I can't wait for those kids to see the new school they're going to be in. It just, the evolution has been a phenomenal process.
And it's really a direct response from that joint meeting that was held last year, where you folks, as well as the board commissioners, the parks commissioners, excuse me, were crystal clear about minimum footprint inside the park itself, not making it atrocious for the community to view as portables. And so we hope that you see it's growing. It's becoming an asset, and ultimately, we hope that it grows into something even more, not only for our students, but also for our community, so that they can be proud of.
It's really hard to see the portables when you drive by. They blend right in. It's really neat.
That's cool.
So on to our Eastside Community Center project or partnership. Steve, do you want to talk to them a bit?
Sure. I don't know if you guys attended the open house that Metro Parks facilitated, but these are some of the graphics that they presented to the community then. And so you guys will be afforded an opportunity to get in-depth into these plans and have your questions answered. I know there were several questions that came up when the original concept diagrams were presented at a study session last year. But it's being developed, it's, they've gone through and gotten the GCCM approval, as we did on Stewart and McCarver. And so they've got a contractor on board. They're looking at how to realize that construction with the architects and the contractor at the same time. The site plan, if you would back up just a sec, it has evolved a bit, but it is in that same quadrant that we showed you guys all at the learnings, our study session that we had. And then programming continues to be developed. On the next slide, you'll see the floor plan of the natorium, the water side, and then the dry side with the gymnasium. At this time, the land lease discussion is still in discussion. It's in the appraiser's hands to finalize. The beauty of it right now is it's going to be an equitable one-to-one swap with SAMMY. And that was what we started off with as a primer to this conversation, and that each organization is coming to the agreement with land, and we're each building on each other's property. And the way that we're looking at the value of the land, obviously, the Point Defiance site is a little more valuable per square foot, but we're making up more square footage at the First Creek Middle School site. And so everybody is on board, including the appraiser right now, in that it's going to be an equitable share. And so that's a positive piece to update you all on.
And those discussions are also going in alignment that, you know, there's sometimes a perception about exchange of cash. You know, both agencies can't give away public funds. And so this desired outcome that both the parks commissioners and you had last year is, hopefully you can see is coming into fruition, which is an equitable, one-to-one legal swap that benefits both areas in the community. And so there won't be an investment of financial above that. There may be enhancements to our own properties at First Creek, and there may be enhancements to the park in different ways, but you should know that we've been able to so far, and knock on wood, until that's final deal sealed, stay within the guidelines that you provided us.
Correct. Also for the joint board meeting on February 10th, you guys will get a bit more insight into some other joint collaborative tasks that we're taking on together with Metro Parks, as well as a report of the annual shared facility usage hours. And you step back and see how many thousands, tens of thousands of hours that we use their fields, they use our facilities. The collaboration is, just continues to grow and improve, and it's something to be proud of.
So one last comment I wanted to make about all of the projects is we're trying to cross-pollinate these projects, have some degree of parity, and so part of that is coming up next week, a teaching and learning charrette, where we're getting together with teaching and learning again, to make sure we hear their voice about how are we supporting what they're doing now in teaching and learning, and what are some other things that we should consider now and for in the future.
Any questions?
Yeah, is there any questions or comments? Director Ashka.
I'm going to have to start way back in the beginning. So I'm really excited that we're seeing really high-quality historic renovations at McCarver and Stewart, Hilltop and Eastside South End schools that have been overlooked in generations past. It's important. I know from dialogue that I've had with you that those have been very equitable in investment, and I appreciate it. It's important for the community. I got a lot of feedback on Stewart when the trees came down. Trees in a neighborhood that have that stature are part of the character of the neighborhood, and it's kind of like an assault when they're certainly not there. So I don't know, maybe give people a heads up on that. But I also noticed in the midst of this presentation that at Wainwright, great extents were made to make sure to preserve the trees, and they were kind of eliminated at Stewart. Was that necessary for construction or the age of the trees? Can you just talk to that?
Yes, and so we had an arborist go through and do a life cycle analysis on the trees. And it was, they were nearing the end of their life cycle, and so what we ended up doing was, we did take them down, but we're replacing them at, I believe, a two-to-one ratio, and so the trees are coming back. We just need an opportunity to get there. And Stewart, for a comprehensive middle school program, is on a relatively tight site, and it was a challenge for the architects. And so one of the things that, as you challenge us to drive equity, we had to take as much usable space, so the entire site is going to be activated. It's like, I would compare it to Washington, in that you're on a small urban footprint, and we're taking every single opportunity we can to maximize student opportunities on site.
I passed out, off that, I passed on that space anticipation just based on previous knowledge, but I'll also pass on the knowledge about the trees and the arborists. You keep referring to the phrase substantial completion.
Yes.
Does that mean occupational for use?
So substantial completion means the building is just about finished, and it can be occupied, but not by students at that point. And so usually, when we have substantial completion, final testing is happening, commissioning of the building, all of the other pieces that have to come into place before we can put students in the building.
It's a pretty standard in the industry term of when the owner can start occupying it. And so it's a pretty significant piece, because substantial completion comes with the blessing of the permitting authority, so the city. So the city says that you've met your life safety needs, and that the building is ready for occupation. Contractually, we hold another phase following substantial completion for the contractor to do all of the testing and balancing of all these complex mechanical, electrical systems, changing out all the air filters from all the heating units that have been on during construction, and just blowing out all the air and cycling things. Even with the best, highest-grade building materials, you still get some off-gassing, and you know, the carpet and the adhesives, you still have some of that new building smells that... So what we do is we try to get a period of time to flush the entire building. Purge the entire, yeah. And so that follows our substantial completion, but is complete by the time we have students and the first day of school start.
So when I hear substantial completion by fall 2017, we're going to plan on starting classes involved?
Yeah, so our substantial completion date is usually about, we aim for a full month before school starts.
Okay, okay. I have a bunch of questions, sorry, but Wainwright, how come there was so much soil remediation required?
It was the smelter. It was the arsenic. It was just in the path, and it was, you know.
Okay.
On several sites like Wilson, where we've churned it, and we've done fields, and we've done other projects, we've taken pieces away of it at a time, but for the most part, Wainwright had remained untouched.
Okay. And lastly, but not leastly whatsoever, the, both SAMMY and the Eastside Community Center, the partnership that's been there and the vision that both organizations have been able to hold and strive towards, even when there's been challenges, has been a phenomenal thing to witness. I think that we are, you know, changing the way that people think about public service in terms of creating partnerships that multiply the value of every single tax dollar across use in our city. So I can't underscore how valuable that is enough. The portables that I'm seeing there, gosh, they really do blend in. It is not the SAMMY my daughter graduated from, right? So there'll be a lore about the old SAMMY that nobody will believe after they see these transitions. And really, a very last comment. Can I just see a quick raise of hands? When I say natorium, do you know what I meant, what that is? Okay, good, all right. Well, when they did the presentation, I asked about it. Whoever was there was just shocked that I had never heard the word before, and I thought, you know, I'm pretty bright, but I don't think most people know natorium. Anyway, thank you very much for that.
Director Wintzke. I'll just say, one question about trees, because I'm a tree lover, and I didn't know they took down those trees. So I have noticed all over town, every time people take down trees, they plant like wimpy little trees that are never going to grow, taller than about 10 feet. So I hope we're going to do really great trees, you know, and looking at the city's new plan to increase the amount of trees in Tacoma, I hope we have substantial trees that look magnificent. And then also, I've noticed over the years that we, some of the trees that we plant aren't taken proper care of for the first several years, and they actually have to be taken care of like a flower almost for three years with watering in the summer. So I hope that we have a plan for all the trees that we plant.
So two things. One, we'd be happy to share the actual tree planting plan, site plan, that we have at a future session, and related to maintenance and operations. We're trying to work out of our silos every day, and so that means design, build, operate, maintain, planning, construction, working tightly with maintenance and operations to make sure that kind of thing happens.
And we have extended the contract with the landscaping firms to maintain for several years the initial establishment period for the trees. The city does have an approved tree list for trees in the right-of-way, and so a lot of that is driven by species that are allowed that are, have been proven not to upturn sidewalks or grow into power lines, and so some of that is regulated. And so we work with the city's arborist to go through the permitting process and identify where the trees are and what types.
Do they provide a cut rate for some of those? I think they, I've heard that in the past.
I'm not sure.
Pardon me?
I'm not sure if they do or not.
Yeah, I think they might, on the right-of-way. So I guess you should investigate that and see if that's true.
Director Cobb, any questions?
I don't have any major questions. Just thinking forward, all these projects look like they're moving along great, and I'm excited for the learning environments that are to come for students. I'm particularly excited about the progress on the Eastside Community Center and the partnership there, because just having worked over there for, over the course of the last year or so, I just think that it's going to do a great service to that community that's pretty underserved in some other ways, just the community east of 56. So I just look forward to that being a resource for students and families.
We're excited too.
Hey, my question about Stewart. Is the exterior finish on the gym going to be as close a match to the existing school? Because the old addition looked like somebody was an afterthought.
Yes. So you, as you know, when you do an addition to an architecturally historic building, you can either do complementary, or you can copy. Most historians and societies frown when you try to actually match the existing building. And so we've used a different material, but we're mimicking the patterns, the banding, the scale, the colors, but in a slightly different material. And so it'll be, hopefully in harmony, that was the plan, but not a direct copy.
But it's not going to look like a sore thumb?
No, no, it's going to look a lot better than the gym of old.
Okay. I wanted to make a comment on the trees. When Geiger was built, and that was before I was, came on the board after it was finished, Steve was the architect and made a very concerted effort to save two trees there. Do you remember that? And they did it, and they're still there with some plaques that commemorated two kids that passed away during their time. And so before, thankfully, they got in there and bulldozed, and I guess the point I'm making is that we are cognizant of trees, and it certainly was demonstrated to our neighborhood in that project. And those two trees were replanted along with the plaques for the two children. And also, the trees there now along Bridgeport or along Jackson are growing quicker, I think, than anyone thought. And they've taken good care of them. So the landscaping there, I have not heard anybody in the neighborhood complain. In fact, they talk about how great the landscaping there looks, and I know we've nurtured those trees. So that's a good example of that. The only other question about, I think some people don't know what a shear wall is. Would you like to explain that?
Sure.
Quickly.
If you can imagine, if you can imagine four posts holding up a roof, in a seismic event, it would shake and roll and shift. And so a shear wall is basically a solid wall that doesn't allow it to go this way. And so it's typically a steel X or a concrete pore or a masonry wall, but something that you basically tie all of the extents of the building into that one wall. So, and it usually goes down and is poured into a concrete footing bigger than a Volkswagen bus underground that basically keeps that building stiff.
And if you look at some of the photographs, you saw some of those Xs? Like, I think it was Wainwright and Wilson. And Director Ashka, your daughter won't feel left out, because the Wilson High School I graduated from isn't going to be the Wilson High School now. Okay, any other questions or comments?
President Viall.
Yes.
Just real quickly, I want to bring everybody's attention to an opportunity to provide some input. It's an open house at Marion Lyon Elementary School. The advertisement is in English and Spanish. Director Merakami, will we have translators there? Do we know?
Have we scheduled that? We will.
We will have some translators there for folks as well, but a great opportunity. That event, for those that are watching at home, is February 3rd from 4:00 to 7:30 at Marion Lyon Elementary School.
Great.
We're fortunate enough that our design firm that we have on there, Dowa, IBI Group with Ericson McGovern, and one of the lead architects on there is fluent in Spanish, so we have translation at every event.
Oh, cool. That's great. That's great. Any further questions? Just thank you, and you know, the pictures are awesome, and we appreciate all the hard work, and we know this is a big job. Board reports and comments. I'm going to start with our student members.
So tonight, me and Chelsea are going to discuss about some of like the issues that we discussed at All City Senate when all the schools were together, and we were talking about like all the issues in our school. And like, one of the main issues that we like found that was similar was like the cameras at our school. So aren't like high schools supposed to like have like cameras? Like, are they required to?
I honestly don't know, and I don't see.
I don't think they're required to, but we like to have them there.
Steve, yeah, you want to respond to that?
It's not required by law, but we do use cameras at all of our secondary sites. So middle schools and high schools are equipped with cameras.
Okay, because, so there was like problems like in our parking lot, so like we do have cameras. And one time, like a parent's car got broken into, and the camera was like shining directly on the car. And so when they went to like the office to, you know, like see the camera, but it wasn't working, and so they said that they're going to start like, you know, make it like turn it on. And then another incident happened where a friend's car got broken into, the same situation, and the camera was pointing directly on it, but then they said that the camera was off. So like, they were just wondering, like, who can they talk to, like, to have it turned on? Because we like complained to them like several times, and it hasn't been turned on yet.
Mr. Merakami, you want to answer that?
I can start.
And then Ms. McMenamy, maybe you can add on to it.
At what facility?
Mount Tacoma.
So I will personally look into it. Ken Wilson is our safety and environmental officer for the district. Miguel Valamosa is our director of security, and so I will work with both of them to see what the system's status is, and I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Shannon, do you have anything to add?
No. Chelsea?
I know similarly, we also have a camera issue in our garage. Personally, we've also-
What school high?
Stadium High School. And also, the garage lights are very dim, and I know that there's a lot of after-school activities that happen. And it's kind of like a safety hazard, because the cameras don't really work in our garage, and it's dim. So it's kind of a scary place to kind of walk around at night. Also, I have a question about IDEA. From my understanding, it's kind of like SODA and SAMMY, but I don't necessarily know, because I know that SODA focuses on the arts.
know because I know that SODA focuses on the arts and Sammy focuses on the science like aspect. So I was wondering what IDEA was focusing on.
Doctor Garcia, you want to tell her?
It will be in concept of sister, or sister school to those two, design, engineering, arts, architecture.
I'm pushing for the A to be architecture.
I think it will be a multifaceted.
We're going to add the texture to the art.
We are, we will.
Well, because I've asked some teachers about it and because we, I, we both go to the All City Senate. And there are a lot of schools of like our high schools that do have a lot of complaints about, it's not necessarily huge things, but it's little things that we would like to get fixed. So I would also like to make sure that we're in consideration, if that makes sense, that where our little details are still put in consideration for our high schools.
And that's why you're on this board is to bring things like that to our attention because oftentimes, Mr. Merakami doesn't hear about those things or superintendent or board members and, and when it's matters of safety, absolutely, you know. If you don't like a teacher, no, but kidding. So, but you know, we've been on poorly spent chinos and so those kinds of things I think are very appropriate. Doctor Garcia?
You bet, thank you. Just the opportunity to, the process would be is to have your principal turn in their request for a small caps improvement and then they go through a process to determine if they are, where they are in the queue, if you will, to be fixed. And so President Viall articulated it very, much more eloquently than I will. Sometimes we don't know. So the more that we have that information, we can gather it, we can improve it, safety is a number one priority.
And don't hesitate to bring things to our attention when they come up from All City Senate because, you know, we're, we're your representatives too. Okay. Director Cobb, any comments?
No comment. Thank you.
Director Wenske. Yeah, I'd like to just bring up two items and I wanted to bring this one up last time and I forgot, but it's about cursive. And I brought up cursive before at this board and I know the superintendent went to the different schools and said that it was being taught. Now, I don't know it's being taught in every classroom, but I just recently talked to a former educator whose grandson came home from college and he said he had never been taught handwriting. Now, he did not go to school in Tacoma, I will say that, but he said he felt like he was at a total disadvantage in college, not being able to read cursive. So are we doing something to make sure that this is taught? It used to be around third grade, you know, are we putting that in the curriculum? And what are we taking away, people ask you?
To answer the question is probably Marie. One of the things that Marie will, we've just had a conversation about this. I don't know, Marie, you want to talk, come and talk about what we're, we're doing? But the bottom line is that cursive writing is not a standard any longer. So it is not in the core curriculum and is not a part of the standards that are, you know, that, that, that the core, the core is asking us to teach. So I'm so glad you're here, Marie, so that you can answer the rest of that question. I do know from visits in classrooms that there certainly are teachers that are still, you know, you know, teaching, teaching the elements of cursive writing, but I think that because it's not a core standard, it does put all schools in a difficult position.
It does and it certainly has become in the media lately with a certain senator that's interested. And Superintendent Santorno stated it beautifully, currently it is not one of our Washington state standards. The standard is in first grade and it states students must be able to write legibly. There's not a standard that specifically speaks to cursive. I know that in many of the schools that I've visited, I've seen it done in practice where students are getting some different sheets and they're practicing it as part of some of their independent work. But I do believe it is optional at this point and some schools are teaching it and some aren't. And that's where we're at right now.
So I, I don't care whether it's not a standard or not with the state. I think it's just important to teach that. And when they get to college, you know, here this student is totally embarrassed because he can't do it. If you want to do any kind of research into old letters or historical research, you are, you just can't do it. And I just think we need to make sure that our students are learning it. And I think if we got out there and asked parents, what do you think? I mean, I think there's some people don't even know we aren't teaching it and all of a sudden, they realize that it's something that's gone by the wayside and I think it's very important. And I don't want to fail a whole group of people and then we come back 10 years later and say, oh, we've made a horrible mistake, we haven't done it yet. There's this group of people that have never learned it and can't learn it because they were, you know, past their prime, so to speak, you know. So anyway, I, I'm just, I feel very seriously about this.
I believe there's a bill introduced.
There is.
To the legislature this session.
And I'm not sure if it'll pass, but. You know, I remember when I took it, did handwriting in school, it, it didn't take more than 10 minutes a day to practice, you know, when you're really young. You practice letter by letter and, you know, I just don't think it takes that much time out of the day to teach. So I'd like to see that brought back. And then the other issue I'm going to just keep on after is high school start times and I don't want to have a bus contract come to us and say, well, we have to wait another five years before we can even consider high school start times. I'd like to look into bus passes that would benefit our whole city, they'd benefit Foss for sure, which is down in population and more, much more difficult for people to get to anymore. So let's start looking at it like other people in the state are doing and nationally too.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. You know, I've not typically taken the discussion about cursive writing very seriously. I have terrible cursive writing. It took me a lot more than 10 minutes a day and I was never very successful at it, although I can write in cursive and I can read it. My children cannot however, and it has occurred to me that things like letters from their grandparents and things like that, that they have to ask me to read for them as adults is kind of sad. I recently had a conversation with somebody that said that there was some material out there that inferred that learning cursive writing actually was a relevant value to learning how to read and future knowledge acquisition speed.
Yes, I've read those articles.
And so I'd be interested in us looking at a little bit more of that material because whether or not it's required, if it's the right thing to do and there's some way we can even optionally provide that in a systematic way, I'm looking at equity here and if it's a value to, you know, our primary objectives. And you're right though, I did not learn how to write well when I was a child and I never was able to pick it up well after that. So I write like a doctor, but I don't get paid like one. And Debbie, I've got her Director Wenske, I also am interested in the high school start time question and how we do that. You know, Nate Bowling has done some tremendous things over the last couple of weeks going to DC and then I think most of you have probably seen his blog that came out and was reposted in the Washington Post and now in the News Tribune. One of the things that he talks about, that we've also talked about is that, well, we have a choice district that anybody can go anyplace. People don't know that and it becomes an equity issue because of transportation. So when we talk about transportation and we talk about, you know, how can we fund things to be the most equitable, I would really like to look at us looking at that as a, as an issue. I was thinking this morning after reading Matt Driscoll's article, you know, what if for, for one year, we got rid of neighborhood boundaries altogether? And by the way, I'm not saying that we're going to do that, please don't, anybody rephrase that that's what I've said because my address is posted. Where would people actually go if they had a choice? It might be an interesting thing for us to find out how the demographics would change by choice if people really knew and could get there without it being an additional challenge on family members.
Okay. On the issue of the bus passes, I totally agree with that, but the problem is, is that Pierce Transit has reduced their service areas and their ability. For example, my neighborhood, there is no bus that runs west of Mildred. So if you want to catch a bus, you either have to walk up to, way up on Sixth Avenue or you have to go down to TCC. So I think one of the issues, if we really want to do that, is we're going to have to work with Pierce Transit and about their bus routes. And there is some movement, a bit afoot to have the city pay more to Pierce Transit, for Pierce Transit to better serve the city of Tacoma. Because every time they've asked for additional funds, the city of Tacoma votes yes and the county votes no. So that would be the only caveat on, on, on the bus passes. For some of the kids, they wouldn't be able perhaps to get where they want to get without being on a bus for two hours or more in the morning. So it's a good idea, but I would suggest we reach out to Pierce Transit, who's been a partner of ours over the years with bus passes and providing transportation even back when I was in school, you could get a pass to ride a bus. So, but the question is, is are they able to serve us in the way that we want to if we go to, it doesn't do any good to give a kid a bus pass.
If it takes them four hours to get there.
Yeah, if it does. And, and some of the kids, when they cut their service back, one kid that didn't live too far from Lincoln, it took him an hour and a half to get to school to ride the bus and yet he was in a place where walking was kind of prohibitive. So I think that's one thing I would just ask is if we could at some point initiate some conversations, perhaps on a staff level with Pierce Transit superintendent about how they can better help us with bus passes in terms of providing services and looking at their service area, you know, for, for the kids that live all over that want to say go to Foss or go, you know, wherever across town. And we used to get a lot of Eastside kids who went to Foss. And when the budget precluded bus passes, Foss lost a lot of the enrollment from that side of town. So that'd be my only caveat. The cursive writing thing, I'm like Vice President Ashka, I didn't learn to write well, but I'm glad that I did learn cursive. And it was a struggle for me, but I know when I was, you know, working out over at Sheridan and Lister four or five years ago, most of the third grade teachers taught cursive and they, they would shove it in when the kids were through with your work practice. This is you're working on your As today, you're working on your Bs. So it was done in a, okay, you've got 10 minutes, go work on your cursive. Or they give them a page of homework of cursive. And so I think, I think if we're flexible enough, we can figure out how to do it. And I personally would like to, you know, see us do that simply because if somebody does want to go research, that's going to be like learning a foreign language for them. Okay, one, one other.
I'd just like to say that in third grade, I did learn how to write cursive and I know that the other student representative, we both learned. But I just, I think the viewpoint that they're seeing right now is that we're so based on technology. For instance, essays are written on computers. So I feel like the teachers not necessarily need students to have perfect handwriting because we do everything like based on technology. But I do believe it is a good skill to have as an adult and as a student because when you're writing notes, you're, you want to write them fast and cursive is the best way to do it, so.
Or for research purposes, if you are, you know, doing research, you get into college and you have to go and get into archives and read cursive notes and things like that.
I would like to add about the cursive. So I remember when I was in fifth grade, I came from Mann Elementary School in fifth grade, I remember they would spend 10 minutes doing like half a page of cursive and like if you're not finished, like, you know, he takes it away. But each day, like you get faster at writing cursive and I feel like I'm like really good at cursive now. And like students like now at my school, they're like, how do you learn how to do cursive? Because they still don't even know how to do their name because like they never learned. So I agree with the cursive.
Great, thank you for your input. Okay, I have one other comment for board, for the board. We're going to have to take a look pretty fast at middle school boundaries. So we need to think about, not for tonight, but think about how we want to proceed with that and how, what are the guardrails we want to do? So get that, thinking about that and we'll either have a study session or maybe we might even talk about it next Saturday briefly, about what, do we want to do the same process we used with the Wainwright Whittier, which, so just think about what process and how we, you, we want to proceed forward. Doctor Garcia, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, this is just a follow-up based on your approval of tonight and thank you very much for that approval. You, you had mentioned providing some guidance. And so as we design the process that we would bring to you for approval, we would want to know any upfront thinking that you had for us to include that in our first attempt of the process.
You can send that.
I apologize. Any specific guardrails you had, guardrails my terms, parameters that you would want us to consider that we would then ultimately bring back to the entire board for a decision? If you could start to send those to President Viall, then we can, we can collect that information and then we can take that and we can either tell you, here's the, here's where we incorporated those, those parameters, or here's the reasons why you may consider supporting that or not supporting that specific parameter. And then you'll, you folks would ultimately decide on the process and then we would turn the team loose again based on the, the green light on the process and we'd really start to investigate middle schools.
And one of the things we've been good about since I've been on this board is getting out in front of stuff. And this is a good example for us to get out in front before we're at a point where we have to start assigning kids so parents will know where their kids are going to be going to middle school because we're going to have some middle school changes as, as we know. All right, future board meetings, Saturday. I'm sorry, do you have comments?
I have one more comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Um, speaking of middle schools, so one day I visited Stewart Middle School and I talked to the principals and I asked like what, what can the board do, you know, to help like support them or in any way? And they said they just, like in any way you guys can support the students because like apparently they're not doing good academically, is what I heard.
That's changed.
Oh, it's changed?
It's changing.
Oh, okay.
They're doing very well.
Okay, that's good here because that's what they told me, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that to us on, all right. Future board meetings, Saturday, February 6th, board retreat at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Tacoma Nature Center on 1919 South Tyler, better known as Snake Lake. And that will be at nine in the morning. Wednesday, February 10th, the meeting that Mr. Merakami mentioned, joint meeting with Metro Parks Tacoma, 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. And that will be at the Point Defiant Zoo and Aquarium Education Building. And then Thursday, February 11th, regular meeting, 6:00 PM location, fourth floor auditorium, Central Administration Building.